Okay, so your worship, we are at 4:41 and should be good to go whenever we're ready.
Welcome to the regular meeting of council electronically via Zoom Tuesday, July 13th at 4:42. A meeting called over and we'll have a moment of silence. We have a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on July 13th, 2021, beginning at 4:42 PM be approved as circulated to all members of council.
All in favor? Motion carried. Uh, we have a motion to move into a closed, uh, I'm sorry, to a public set, uh, meeting?
Um.
Declaration, declaration.
Yeah, there's this declaration of canary interest for the open.
Oh, sorry, sorry folks, yes. Is there any declaration of, uh, of canary interest? Uh, Rick, yes, sorry.
Yeah, I have a, uh, canary interest on number five, one Legion parking lot on the present, uh, delegation and I also have a canary interest on, uh, seven, one, uh, Royal Canadian Legion Branch eighty-seven parking lot. Uh, my son is the acting water foreman and was consulted in the report.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you, Councilor Owen. Motion go to public? Well, we'll now enter into the public meeting and, uh, welcome Mr. Scott on the planning, uh, subject.
So. Thank you. I'm glad to be here. I think I know Shaba. He may have, he was working as an engineer with, with Sudcliffe or something. A long time ago, ten years ago, I talked with Shaba. Is that right, Shaba?
Uh, well, that could be right. I work for so many people as long as they pay me, but I don't, I don't remember what.
Are you an engineer?
Uh, yes.
You're an engineer, correct?
Yes.
You are, you're the, you're the guy I talked to a long time ago. Nice to meet you again.
Okay, nice.
I'm Bill Scott, the architect at Tivens.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, back to the agenda for the public meeting, uh, meeting called order. Any declaration of your canary interest? None noted. And the purpose of the meeting is for planning, uh, Jenna McNaughton?
Perfect. Thank you, your worship. Uh, so through you to council, the purpose of this public meeting is to consider a proposed amendment to zoning by law twenty-one dash oh three-two of the Towne Kirkland Lake pursuant to the provisions of section thirty-four of the Planning Act. And to consider a proposed amendment to the town's official plan pursuant to the provisions of section seventeen of the Planning Act.
Please, I consider further the confirmation note of notice. Uh, can we have the confirmation of, uh, notice then, Jenna?
Correct. So the notice was dated June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. It was sent in accordance with the Planning Act and circulated to property owners a hundred and twenty years radius and to various agencies and municipal departments.
Do you?
Okay.
Uh, the, you want to give us the summary of, of the planning report, Jenna?
Excellent. Uh, thank you through you, your worship to council. Uh, we received an application um, for the property known as forty forty-two Second Street, the old medical center, just for reference. Um, the proposed applications to redesignate the property from commercial to residential and to rezone the property from town center commercial to residential high density. Um, the applicant is looking to convert the dwell, um, the existing commercial space that's remaining on the bottom floor to residential units and that does include the creation of one accessible unit. Um, so the proposal is consistent with the policies that are set out in the provincial policy statement. Um, there are different clauses that state that we are to encourage, um, the, the conversion of commercial spaces. Um, when it, as long as it doesn't affect the overall employment areas. Um, in addition, we have just updated our official plan and zoning by law in the last ten years. Um, which, uh, did state that we had enough commercial land, so eliminating one commercial space within a building, um, wouldn't, wouldn't be against what the policies say. Um, it's also consistent with the intent of the growth plan for Northern Ontario. Um, as it is a continued use of the building, uh, for multi-residential. So when we look at the official plan, this is where they're looking at the designation from general commercial to residential. Um, we would be looking at a high residential area. Um, so the, the official plan does encourage, um, ensuring that when you're converting these spaces, that they are located centrally to a commercial space, uh, residential spaces and that there's lots of sidewalks, walking paths, green space. Um, so while the site is designated as commercial right now, um, it is surrounded by those, those commercial residential nodes, um, which would be supported by the official plan. The official plan also does encourage council to promote the creation or retrofit of barrier-free designs for the aging and special needs population. So for those reasons, the, the proposal would conform with the official plan. In regards to the zoning bylaw, it is looked at a town center commercial. However, uh, by eliminating the commercial use, we can keep that as a town center commercial zone. So we would be looking at an R-three special, which is a residential high density. Um, as the building sits, it wouldn't actually meet the setback requirements um, for your front yard setback and your side yard setbacks. However, there is no proposal to expand the building. The building will sit as is, um, with no issues. Um, no further in, um, issues into those setbacks. Um, there was one issue with the parking. Um, so they are seeking a reduction of parking to, from seventeen to thirteen spaces. The multi-residential requires one and a quarter space per residential unit. So they are looking at thirteen spaces, um, and that's what's existing on the lot. Um, there is a lot of, um, available on-street parking in the area if there are visitors and guests to the area. So we did feel that that was sufficient. Um, we did complete a site visit. Um, the, the parking lot is signed stating that it is for private parking and for the tenants only. Um, and based on the surrounding areas, as I mentioned, there are some high multi-residential buildings in the area, so it would be, um, compatible with the neighborhood. Uh, we did not receive any correspondence from the general public. Um, we just did get a note from our Director of Community Services in regards to the parking lot. Just to ensure that they're meeting the integrated accessibility standards, uh, regulations and, um, based on the amount of spaces, designating one accessible space will meet those standards. Uh, we did have a planning advisory committee meeting on June twenty-fourth um, to review this application and the committee did recommend, uh, that the approval be made. Uh, they were, they did make a recommendation that the applicant looks at the parking lot to see if we can just adjust where the, um, accessible spaces. Um, so that's something that the applicant can do. Um, so in summary, uh, the property is located within that area that's comprised of the institutional commercial residential. It's appropriate to the surrounding neighborhood. Um, the application will need to recognize the existing setbacks as the building sits. Um, they are, if this is approved, they are requesting an update to their existing site plan control agreement. So all of that has been taken into account, um, for the site plan control agreement. Um, so that's, that's the summary of the report, so.
Any questions or concerns from, uh, council members? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, explain the parking lot situation. Um, the accessible parking spot, the way the current site plan is, is next to Fern's Restaurant. So what was suggested was it, the parking lot be a mirror image of what's on the plan. So your parallel parking was along the back of forty forty-two, uh, Second Street would then be along the restaurant side. And that would put your accessible parking spot, uh, closer to the building. Now that was just a suggestion. There may be reasons why it can't be done because we're not architects. We're not parking lot designers. We're just people. And so that was just a suggestion. It's not a, not something that the committee felt had to be done.
Any other comments or concerns? None noted. Uh, we have a motion to receive the report.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the planning report be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Uh, correspondence received. Jenna?
And I believe Ms. Naught, Ms. McNaughton touched on it already, so we could just jump to the motion to receive unless she has any further comments.
No, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the correspondence be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Any questions from council? None men, none noted?
Um, are we, we're talking about, yeah, yeah, your worship, question?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Uh, we're still talking about this, uh, what was presented by, uh, Architect Scott? Uh, yes, Mr. Scott, I do remember you now, so takes a while. But do you, uh, do you, when this is all approved down the road, any timelines regarding the initiation of this project and the completion of it?
Are you asking me a question?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um, I think as soon as we have approval, we will apply for a building permit. And, uh, I'm going to, um, definitely mirror that parking lot like the counselor, uh, suggested. Uh, to put the handicap parking spot closer to the building. I think that's an excellent idea. I'm, I'm going to get an offer to do that. And, uh, then we think it probably be about a month, they'll start construction. They, they would like to start tomorrow, but, um, as soon as we have the building permit, they're going to start construction. Yeah, they, of course, they want to, they want to, the building sitting there vacant is not bringing in any income. They want, they want to, uh, you know, put the building to good use and make it into apartments. One for the handicap, so that's moving in the right direction. Anyway, there's a playground across the street. I wasn't aware of that, of the, of the, um, restaurant aspect with the parallel parking, but we're going to move that over just like you said, no problem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really concerned about parallel park, uh, parking on the, on the street, especially in winter time for snowplowing and whatnot. I guess there's no overnight parking, as you know, in every, uh.
The parallel parking will be against that far wall there where the rest, he says it was a restaurant. It's a mirror image, a flip version.
Yeah.
Won't be on the street.
Okay.
Yeah, gonna be against it, up, up ninety degrees to the building. I could send you some plans on that, uh, as soon as we're finished, you know, that, if, depending that, if, that's.
Yeah.
Said you don't want to do it. I can see the advantage of putting that handicap parking spot next to the building. I'm sure that they'll understand that. It should be closer. You're absolutely right.
Well, I, I will appreciate it on your drawings if, uh, we, uh, kind of really, uh, this is just, uh, a, a, a new term now. My apologies for saying that. Accessibility parking, uh, on your drawing as opposed to the, the word that you've been, uh, using. So if you don't mind.
You prefer accessibility?
Accessibility.
All right, all right. I think it's all an inclusive.
Yeah, and.
Inclusive society.
I'm always hoping that, uh, uh, local people too will also be higher, be engaged in during the construction process. Thank you.
All right. Uh, bring those concerns to the honor.
Okay.
Local, uh, hire some locals, local carpenters if you'll take.
Okay, no further questions from, um, council or from the public? Mr. Scott, do you have any further questions?
Am I the public?
Yeah, I guess we call you up.
Okay, uh, you mentioned there, we're going to have to update the site plan control agreement. I'm wondering what kind of conditions are in there? Uh, and what, what, is that going to affect a delay on, on our construction schedule? Like, what, what's the, what's the process we're updating the site plan control agreement?
And Jenna?
I can comment on that. Um, so Mr. Scott, the, the site plan control agreement is being addressed, uh, following this, um, the public meeting. So if the, the proposal does get approved, then, uh, the site plan control agreement is going to be updated to reflect the proposal, um, because you're looking at changing just the site plan. That's something that we can retain on file. Um, so we will, we can definitely, it's, it's moving forward. There's no conditions on that. It's just taking the, the new plans and putting it in the, the, the site plan.
Okay, that's all right. I understand.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion, uh, from consideration of the proposed bylaw.
Yes, we are proposing two separate motions as this requires an official plan amendment as well as a zoning bylaw amendment. So the first one speaks to the official plan. Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that staff be directed to present a bylaw to amend the official plan designation for forty to forty-two Second Street from commercial to residential.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that staff be directed to present a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw twenty-one dash zero three-two to rezone forty to forty-two Second Street from town center commercial C-one to residential high density special R-three dash zero-one with the exemptions to minimum parking, minimum front yard setback, and minimum side yard setbacks.
All in favor? Motion carried. Uh, I am number ten, explanation of any appeal process. Ms. McNaughton?
There, yep, so there is an appeal process that is in effect for twenty days, which will begin tomorrow or as soon as we write the notice of decision. Um, so as long as you have put a, something in writing or attended this meeting, then you are eligible to make an appeal.
Thank you. With the motion to adjourn and move back into the regular council meeting.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the public meeting be adjourned.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. If you, uh, wanted to stay, you can do so to watch, uh, go over.
I just have one, one question, please. Thank you for letting me, um, be invited to your meeting. Uh, but this, um, the appeal process, we have to wait twenty days, is that correct, before we can apply for the building permit?
Yep, we can, uh, we can give you a call, me and Porky, in the morning and we can talk about our next steps.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to leave.
You're welcome.
Okay, bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Uh, item number five, petitions and delegations. Welcome, John McDonnell. Canadian Legion, eighty-seven branch. Welcome, John.
Good afternoon, your worship, counselors. Um, has everyone seen the letter that we sent to the town in April?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, good. And the PowerPoint presentation, did you get a chance to see the, uh, pictures that were submitted? Uh, just, just a quick review then. Uh, November twenty-sixth, noticed water coming from the snow in the parking lot. Here's the first video that I shot at the branch.
Sorry, if I can just jump in, Mr. McDonald, um, unfortunately, just whatever you had provided to me is what's included for your presentation. Um, sorry, I should have noted if you had anything further, I could have, uh, put it there, but.
Okay. Thank you. Is it okay to continue with the video?
Uh, we don't have a video on our end, sir.
Oh, so you, you, nobody can see this then?
No.
Not at this point, no.
Okay, very good.
Is anything that would be shared on the screen has to go through myself, so I didn't get it from you upfront.
Okay, so this is one of those things where I should have made arrangements earlier?
Yes, sorry about that.
Ah. Okay, we'll stop the video, go back to the PowerPoint. And just review then, uh, we had water coming into our parking lot at the end of November, trying to get to the drain on the southeast corner of the branch. And, uh, it was filling up with water. It was freezing. We had town crews in for a few days. And, uh, nobody knew where the water was coming from until a piece of equipment was purchased by the town to locate the, uh, break at the, in the water main at the district school board building, which is a much higher elevation than the parking lot of Legion. And the water, when it did come to surface, it went under the parking lot. Um, uh, well, I, I don't know about the videos here, if we can get it, get it to you to see, you can actually see the water coming up through the pavement. And then as, uh, the frost set in, the pavement heaved. And we were, we were lucky enough to get some, uh, concrete barricades from Kirkland Gold on a loan basis. And waiting for the, uh, spring thaw there and, uh, getting a couple of videos on water upwelling from the pavement, which means the underside of the pavement has been washed out in places. And we're recommending the entire parking lot to get stripped, regraded, and repaved. So are there any questions?
Uh, John Mircolli here. Uh,
Yes, sir.
The quotations that you got, John, uh, did you get three quotations and that was the lowest one or?
Uh, the one thirty, one thirty-five, one thirty-six had a five thousand mobilized, demobilized costs associated with it. They were in town at the time that, uh, they submitted that one hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, number. And I've got one from, uh, Des Morondo in Halleberry. Uh, and they're coming in at one thirteen. I've asked Miller Pavement on two occasions for quotes. And Levec Brothers that are doing the work between Kirkland Lake and Larder Lake have been requested for a quote as well. And, uh, so I've got two quotes in, two quotes hopefully coming in. And I'm sorry, I can't get the three quotes at this time, so.
Do you have any other questions or comments, uh, from, uh, from Mr. McDonald?
Well, I, uh, yeah, your worship, I just, uh, I'll feel comfortable if we can get the rest of the quotations because that way we will see, uh, uh, you know, the, the lowest, uh, uh, also see how far the lowest would be. But to make a decision on one quote at this particular stage, I think is, uh, I would say very premature, but if we can, uh, get the other two, that would be very, very helpful. Or we can carry on to, uh, maybe decide on, if we get the three, then maybe we'll essentially go with the lowest.
Uh, well, like I say, the lowest right now is a hundred and thirteen thousand from, um, an, an outfit that's out of Halleberry. They did the, uh, touch up on the, uh, parking lots here at the Independent Grocer in the last two weeks. And, uh, Miller Pavement is probably going to submit a quote when they get their gear up here. They've got a job to do in Kirkland Lake in August, apparently. And that's when, that's about, I guess that's when they'll send someone over to look at the job. But we did put this request in for a quote back in April. Knowing that the town would be looking for three quotes.
Okay, John, we're going to, uh, there's a follow-up report after you're finished, uh, coming from, uh, head of Works Department. Uh, for more, with more details as to, uh, what they found, so, uh, we'll be taking another advisement. So if there's no other questions, uh, John can sit in and listen to that presentation, if you like, say.
Um, you're welcome to listen. Uh, I thought to you, your worship, but generally he wouldn't speak to anything else.
No, you won't be able to speak, but, uh, if you want to listen to it, you can.
Greatly appreciated. Thanks very much, sir.
Yep.
If, um, as soon as I get those quotes in, I'll fax them to Town Hall for next month's meeting, I guess.
Okay.
And thank you very much for your, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, John, and, uh, we have a motion to, uh, receive your report.
Moved by Lad, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the delegation from John McDonald be received.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I am number seven, reports municipal officers and communications on the Royal Canadian Legion Branch eighty-seven parking lot.
Yeah.
Uh, Jim Roman, Director of Public Works.
Sorry, we just have to be number six.
Number six.
Six, sorry. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations, sort of, generally.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the meeting of council held June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Minutes of a special meeting of council held June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. Minutes of a special meeting of council held June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Minutes of a special meeting of council held July sixth, twenty-twenty-one. And that council accept the minutes of the following committee meetings. Minutes of a planning advisory meeting held April eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Minutes of the library board meeting held May twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, and minutes of the museum advisory committee meeting held May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Any further discussion or questions? None noted. All in favor? Motion carried. Now we'll go to seven point one, Royal Canadian Legion Branch eighty-seven parking lot. Uh, Jim Roman, Director of Public Works.
Good afternoon.
Welcome, John.
Um, okay, I, um, put this report together for council to, um, just to, to inform you of, um, this matter from, from the department's perspective. Uh, I, I detailed, uh, in the, in the background section, um, how Work, the Works Department responded to, to, to the, uh, water that was collecting in the Legion parking lot. Um, I won't necessarily go through each, each of the items, other than, um, from November twenty-sixth, uh, it was, the repair ultimately took place on, on January sixth. So there was a, uh, time in between. Now, um, from the department's perspective, uh, there, there was no indication upfront that this was treated water. Um, the water was sampled for chlorine residual, but none was detected. Um, now, that, that doesn't mean it wasn't town water, but, uh, um, it, it, it did cause, you know, some, some question as to whether or not this was coming from the water main. Now, staff, uh, continued to look into, uh, trying to determine where this water was coming from. They inspected the surrounding buildings. Um, they turned off the, the service. Um, they turned off the, the service to gavel, um. Listened for, um, leaks at, at the surrounding service valves. And there was really no indication that uh, there was a leak, so they more or less had exhausted, um, all, all means available to them. They did order a specialized piece of equipment that, uh, a corollator that ultimately was able to locate the leak in the mains. And, uh, uh, at which point staff did take the steps to, to repair the main. Um, now, when the snow cleared, it, it became evident that there was some damage to the Legion parking lot. Um, I've uh, included a couple of pictures in, in the report that shows uh, that the dam, the damage is primarily along the face of the building. Uh, now, we did suggest to, um, the Legion that, that they approached their insurance company and submit a claim. Um, in, in discussions with, with the towns, um, we, we've been told that uh, it would be difficult to, to, you know, show liability on, on, on the town's perspective with respect to the water main break. That these things can't be predicted. However, at the same time, there may be some liability with respect to um, the town's performance in, in how the matter was addressed. Now, the, I, I, I believe that every, every means possible was, was exhausted to, to try and, um, locate this leak. But that, that would be, uh, something for the insurance companies to to argue amongst themselves. Um, ul- ul- ultimately, we're recommending that the Legion submit a claim to their insurance and that they provide us with either um, um, something that shows that their claim was accepted or some formal sort of, um, denial from the insurance company. The, the Legion did provide us with something uh, from their insurance policy, which shows that, um, a- as it says, um, uh, their, their insurance policy states that water settlement events are excluded. But that doesn't necessarily mean a, a claim was denied. Um, they, they do need to go through the formal claim submission process. Uh, on, once we receive, um, their response, I, I would recommend that we approach our, um, insurance company at that time. For, to, to see if the claim could go through on our policy. Now, with regards to the proposed cost of repairs, um, town staff did go out, measure up the area, the damaged area in question. Um, and we come to an estimate of approximately twenty-three thousand dollars to do the repair. Um, I would suspect the Legion's estimates are based on the entire parking lot, we didn't get a detailed estimate from them, only the, uh, the dollar figure. But, um, I, I would suspect they're looking at redoing an, an area considerably larger than what we see as damaged. Uh, in, in the end, um, should something go through on the town's policy, our deductible is ten thousand dollars. So at, at this point, we're recommending that, um, we, we request a formal acceptance of denial of, of a claim from the Legion through their policy. And, uh, we, we can proceed at that point.
Questions or comments from, uh, council? Counselor Albinoff?
Yeah, uh, no, I listened to, uh, both sides, uh, uh. Uh, Mr. Roman has some good points, uh, you're not gonna replace everything because somebody wants it replaced and and it's not the, it's not damage that was caused by a water break. I think there's some negotiating to be done. Uh, you're right, I think the insurance company should be involved. Uh, we should, uh, have somebody probably independent of both the town and the Legion to have a look at it and make it, make a rational decision based on uh, how the, uh, how much damage was actually caused by the water break. Uh, and then proceed from there, uh, I don't want to deny the Legion's, uh, claim to some sort of, uh, uh, payment back for the, or for us to fix whatever damage was caused by the water break, but I don't think we should be too extreme either, you know, that it can be, uh, very costly for insurance and for taxpayers, thank you.
Any further comments or questions?
Uh, yeah, I think it's, uh, reading all of this, uh, I agree with, uh, uh, Counselor Ivanoff, uh, Eugene Ivanoff, at, because I'm not too sure, it, it's, it's not conclusive that this damage uh, to the parking lot was caused by the, uh, uh, municipal services. Uh, yeah, I think if you get an independent, uh, uh, person to, to look into this. And, and I also believe that the repair, if it must be done uh, by us, if we uh, if the town is of, uh, did cause the damage, it should be prescribed to the areas where the area, areas where the damage has occurred, uh, not the, not the whole, not the whole parking lot, so. Uh, it's better to have a third party to look at this because I see, reading through all of this, the town staff, they did all they needed to do, uh, to, to test to see if it was due to town's, uh, uh, services, but again, uh, there's nothing here to indicate for now anyways that uh, it is due to to, to the, uh, buried facilities there, so. Yeah, a third party will be okay, and then of course, if we are found to be liable, then uh, the repair should be self-prescribed to, uh, to the areas where the damage has occurred as opposed to the whole parking lot. That's just my take, thank you.
I, I agree, I think, uh, it, it's, it's inconclusive what caused the, the problem to begin with. And certainly we can't, uh, the whole parking lot, uh, isn't going to be replaced, uh, because of it, uh, from, at our expense, I, I would say. But I think that's not really feasible or reasonable. But, uh, we have to do some further investigation, I think this is the proper method to, to approach it. So if there's any other questions and comments, we'll, uh, we have a motion.
And cer- certainly, once we get a response from the Legion and, and an indication from our own insurance as to, you know,
Agreed.
The town's liability, we would certainly be bringing this back to council to look for direction at that point.
Okay, we will put that in the motion, Jim.
So right now, it's a motion read that does speak to the insurance for the Legion as well as ourselves, and then just by hearing this, it sounds like I'll just add to say that we report back to council, and then at that point, would we do uh, language about the third party, um, person, or, or do we do, do you want any text about that now, or you just want us to do insurance and report back?
Insurance and report back, sounds good.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, thank you. So moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Shaba, the resolved that report number twenty-twenty-one dash PW dash zero zero four entitled Royal Canadian Legion Branch eighty-seven parking lot be received. That staff be directed to acquire formal proof of claim acceptance or denial from the Legion Branch eighty-seven. And that staff be directed to report the incident to the town's insurance as a potential claim in order for an investigation into potential liability before proceeding further and report back to council with the findings.
No further, no further comments, all in favor? Motion carried?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Item, uh, seven point two. Kirkland Lake, uh, Gold Airport use request to host a drive-in movie night. Rich Urbanal, Waste Manager. Uh, manager.
Hi, everybody, how's everybody tonight? Uh, what we have here is Kirkland Lake Gold is requesting the use of, uh, of the airport on, uh, the evening of August thirteenth to host a drive-in movie event for their employees. Um, so they're requesting the apron area, they're going to be submitting site plan to, uh, uh, site drawing of what they're gonna do. Um, all COVID protocols will be, will be in place, they have a committee, uh, and security to ensure that, uh, um, people will remain in their vehicles. Um, while they attend the event, it's, it's a private affair and it's not for the public at large. So anybody from the public who's trying to get in will, will be, uh, able to access the, uh, the airport. Um, the, there is a, there is a user fee in place for special occasions at the airport, and we use that when the Drag Race Committee hosts their event, so that's the same fee we'll, we'll use, uh, and associate it with the KAL Gold request. There will be an agreement in place to ensure that the airport's brought back to, uh, to a standard that it can operate, the airport will be closed during the event and no, no flights will be permitted to land. Um, however, we don't see that as being, uh, a big problem, it's, uh, it's, it's a few hours and, uh, I'm sure that, uh, they'll set up and, and be out of there and um, myself or another staff member will ensure that everything's cleaned up before we reopen the runway. Um, at, uh, this point, it's, uh, it's totally up to council if they want to approve the request from KAL Gold, or maybe they recommend them hosting it, uh, in another location, uh, where they're very desired, so, uh, use of the airport for, for their staff, uh, get together. Any questions?
Uh, Counselor Ivanoff?
Great idea, you know what, I think, uh, Mr. Shabano, it's a good thing that they would do that for their employees, I think it's, uh, it's a great idea, and, uh, hey, congratulations to, uh, Kirkland Lake Gold for coming up with something. I know they need a big site because they've got so many employees, that's the perfect spot to have it, and you shut it down for a few hours, perfect.
Uh, I see in the, in the, uh, uh, go ahead, uh, Lad.
Oh, I was just gonna compliment Kirkland Gold, I think it's a very good way to come out of this, uh, COVID-nineteenth fiasco, I mean, to get people to at least begin to, uh, think about, uh, the future and, and, and hopefully things will be, will be okay, so it is, is a good psychological boost to those, uh, to those, uh, uh, members, and I hope that, uh, some, uh, other industries who will follow suit to have other things organized for their employees just to, just to get together again, because it's been a while, so, uh, I'm happy that KAL Gold is doing that.
Rick, uh, I see within the, uh, uh, your report, they have to meet all, uh, uh, health unit restrictions. Uh, I know we ran into a little bit of a problem in the past, we're not looking for a letter from the National Health Unit where they support the unit, uh, the, the occasion. Uh, but as long as they meet the restrictions of the health unit. Might be.
Yeah, so the, the intent is to have the employees all be comfortably seated inside their vehicles during the, uh, during the, the showing. Um, and, uh, they're, they're committed to all COVID protocols and, uh, um, situations that may arise, that may not even come, may not even be here yet, maybe, you know, by August thirteenth, there might be something else. But they're committed to, uh, following all the, the health and safety guidelines pertaining to COVID and, uh, uh, the health unit.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? None noted, we have a motion.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba, the resolved that report number twenty-twenty-one dash dev dash zero three one entitled Kirkland Lake Gold Airport Use Request to Host a Drive-In Movie Night be received. That council approved in principle pending any pandemic restrictions. Kirkland Lake Gold's request for the use of the Kirkland Lake Airport to host a drive-in movie night on August thirteenth from two P M to twelve A M. And that staff be directed to finalize an agreement with Kirkland Lake Gold for the use of the Kirkland Lake Airport to host a drive-in movie night.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item seven point three, Canada Community Revitalization Fund will pass Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, uh, your worship, through you to council. Fednor has launched a new program, it is of a limited time duration. It is of, uh, higher percentages than, uh, we normally see. It is intended to help communities, uh, overcome the issues that have, uh, uh, arisen with COVID by encouraging greater community engagement, encouraging open community spaces, people to come together with the idea that one, it revitalizes the community, but also begins to stimulate economic activity. Uh, as I said, it is a seventy-five percent funding arrangement, uh, the town of Kirkland Lake, uh, we did an assessment as to where this could be used, because the timelines on the turnaround for, uh, stage one, stage twos are very, very fast. We looked at, uh, wo- areas in the community where we could achieve the desired effect, uh, according to Fednor's, um, expectations, but also where we could offset real and potential community costs that will be coming up in the future and provide long-term benefit to the community. The options in terms of, uh, open spaces and that are somewhat limited, we put forward the, uh, civic park, there are three areas specifically where we can see long-term costs that could be offset. One is a storage building, second one is paving of the walking trail for accessibility. Third one is, uh, improving the lighting, again, accessibility and safety and security. Two other items, uh, playground and a pickleball court and adult, uh, area, sorry, three, uh, are in response to, uh, public input in that, uh, over the, uh, last couple of years as to, uh, things that would be desired in that location. We have submitted a phase one because of the turnaround time, it does not commit the community to anything. We are seeking direction from council as to whether we should proceed with a stage two. The total project costs are three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. TKL share for, uh, under seventy-five percent would be eighty-seven thousand five hundred. It is not, I do not believe it would impact, uh, this year's budget, it would be in the future. That's all.
Comments or questions, council? Counselor Ivanoff?
Yep, I like spending twenty-five cent dollars, and if we can do that, uh, hey, good, you know what, I think, uh, it's worth, uh, sending the application in, and certainly we can get some benefit from it, uh, more power to you, uh, good job, Will.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I really have mixed feelings on this, uh, for a number of reasons. Uh, one, once again, we're putting money into a place where we already have an abundance of recreation facilities when we don't have a lot in Spastika and we have none in Chappie Hughes. Um, yes, they are twenty-five cent dollars, but they add up to eighty-seven thousand five hundred. And my belief is that currently for a town of less than eight thousand people, we have a phenomenal uh, recreational uh, infrastructure within this town. Uh, certainly, I would think it's far more than most towns in our South. I look at our hard services, our roads, our sidewalks, our eighty-five-year-old sewer lines. And I think you know, wouldn't we be doing the residents of Kirkland Lake a bigger favor? By spending that, putting that eighty-seven thousand five hundred towards things that are absolutely needed. Um, if we had a shortage of recreation facilities in Kirkland Lake, my thoughts would be different. Um, I will wait till the end of this discussion before I decide which way I will vote. Um, but those, you know, I mean, I, I, I agree with Eugene, you know, they are twenty-five cent dollars. Um, that, that factor can't be ignored. Um, would it make Civic Park a better park? Yes, it would. So I mean, there are, there are pluses to it. But I will reserve my decision until full time, thank you.
Well, I, I think I can support this, uh, when I look at Civic Park, it's, it's a, a gem in our community. And, uh, continuing to support, uh, uh, the facility and, and bringing it up to even a more attractive standards, uh, I, I, after driving by there today, there was another four hundred people at After driving by there today, there was another 400 people at the vegetable and not a flea market, but different craft shows and what their items is what whatnot. So any way we can promote people coming into town, it's not just Kirkland Lakers. I think it does attract outside visitors as well. So I can support this investigation. Uh, Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, I understand where Councilor Rick Owen is coming from. I I would like to see a lot of playgrounds to enhancement of playgrounds in in Swastika and and Chappie Hughes. But the fact remains that the civic is now becoming a hub of activities not only for people that live in Kirkland Lake and as you've rightly put it, Your Worship, people from other areas around Kirkland Lake as well. I I know the market thing has been really an attraction for everyone in around Kirkland Lake. So as much as we need enhancement of other playgrounds in other places, so I'm gonna be in support of this here because we are spending a fraction of our money and we're getting a lot of funding from the government to further enhance the the hub, which is what civic is becoming now. And it's we're gonna be good for the town. But I also suggest that the staff look into the future future funding for enhancement of other places as in Swastika and Chappie Hughes. I do know we all drive around. If anybody likes the place, I mean, you could drive from Chappie to Swastika. It's not a big drive. It's not a long drive to civic. But I still staff look at into funding for enhancement of other areas to design civic. But for this particular motion, I think I'm gonna support it. I think the it's becoming a hub, civic that is. And we should like to get money to enhance it so that we can attract more people from outside the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Questions? Do you have a motion?
Uh, Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that report number 2021 dash dev dash zero three two entitled Canada Community Revitalization Fund be received and that staff be directed to complete a phase two application of the Canada Community Revitalization Revitalization Fund for Civic Park re-envisioning?
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 7.4, green and inclusive community building. GICV fund submission update, Ms. Sacre, her director of community services. Welcome, Bobby.
Thank you, Worship, through you to council. This is in response to the last meeting of May 4th when we brought to council a couple of different funding opportunities. And the Green Inclusive Community Buildings Fund for Community Complex Retrofits was recommended to apply to and to come back with updated information. So when you look at this fund, it is quite comprehensive. There are a lot of dollars available. However, the application itself has a lot of detail that is required. We specifically need to be able to provide in the application, environmental and green objectives. We have to use specific rep screen software. We have to look at greenhouse gas emissions and we have to look at the building structural information. So this is information that we must go out to a consulting firm to determine what all of these aspects are for the application. So we did talk to Petrowski Consulting, who we worked with in the past, to see if they had the capability to complete this type of work for us because they have worked for the municipality in the past and they have a great deal of this data. And they are able to, however, it does come with a cost. This is information that we will need now and into the future because when we are looking at provincial and federal funding, they are looking for reduction in energy expenditures in the majority of their funding. So we will ideally, we'll get this information soon and we can use it into the future as well. So the cost to the municipality is $19,240 to get the work completed. And I did include the quote from Petrowski, so you can see what their breakdown is. It's done by the hour. They are quite hopeful that they can do it in less than that amount of time is what they've told me. However, they wanted to show what their best guess would be at the maximum. I also asked them to include a line item for any additional work in case we got to that point. However, when I did ask that, they verbally said they felt that they could do it in less time than what they allocated here. There are there are options. We do not need to apply to this fund. The thing about this fund is it is 80% funded, which we have not seen that in the past and the dollar value is quite high. So we have had a building condition assessment done in the past. And this would allow us to apply to the funds that at some point the town is going to have to pay. A lot of it is it's itemized on the the last council report that was provided to you. You'll see there's electrical, there's mechanical, there's roofing, there's all kinds of things. So it is the building structural apparatus that we are looking at. So these came through in the past that we were required for other funding applications along with the timeline of when we would need to apply. So if we do not do something like this, whether it's with Petrowski or someone else, we will not be able to apply for the funding. So we do miss a fairly substantial financial opportunity. The other option I've indicated is that we certainly could do an RFP for the services that Petrowski said that they could give us. My concern with that is the turnaround. So what what the grant indicated was that applications are accepted on a continuous basis until the total funding has been allocated. So this has been around just for a few weeks so far, but there already was a deadline of any projects over $3 million. We've already passed that deadline. So the large products, all the applications are already in. As well, because Petrowski has done a fair bit of work here in the past, they have a lot of the legwork done. So I I would suspect that if we asked another consulting firm, that cost would be higher. And we are not violating any policy for us to do so because it is indicated in our town by law that this can be done. So there's a few ideas there. So I certainly entertain any questions I may be able to answer.
Councilor Ivanov?
Nope, knowledge is power, Ms. Sacre. And if you have the information ready and there's time, there's an opportunity to get a grant, I think you've done a great job so far getting us money for the town. And I think if it hadn't been for having the information ready to go, we would have missed out on some opportunities. So I think that's it's a great investment for this town to invest in finding out just what we can do and what we what we need. Nope, I think it's a great idea and I certain support your your proposal.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, just a quick question, Ms. Sacre. How much are we applying for? Or do we know?
We don't know yet. We do have to, the consultants will let us know. We have to show a 25% energy reduction. So what they'll do is they'll actually go through and they'll say, this is our current building. If you did these types of upgrades, this is what we'd have in the proposed building. And if it shows 25% energy reduction, then we can apply. So in first glance, we're thinking it's going to be around the $3 million mark. But they have to run all the numbers to make sure. That would be the max. And that again, just as a reminder, this is the funding that we can spend over the next five years. So the town's 20% portion can be spread over the five-year period. We also can look for other opportunities to fund that, but at the 80/20 split. We do know that the 20% is substantial. The beauty of it is that we can spread it over a number of years.
Okay, thank you. And to steal one of Councilor Ivanov's lines, I like 80 or 20 cent dollars as well, so. But I think in long term, this project makes a lot of sense. I mean, anytime we've been do it with this much support from the federal government, I believe it is, improve the efficiency and long-term sustainability of the building, it just makes sense. And I fully support this application.
Yes, I I agree. We it's something we we need to do anyway. So with the support funding, now is the time to apply. Great. Any further questions? Uh, Councilor Owen?
I have one more comment. Yes, I hate single bid things, but Ms. Sacre, I agree with you 100%. With your recommendation, why would you go out and hire a new consultant? It's gotta start from square one. When we can bring somebody that's already done a lot of, well, hopefully at least some of the legwork and save the repairs money. So I agree 100% with your choice. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Shaba?
Uh, yeah, I'm also in support of this. Anytime you can get more money or a split, it's always it's always a good thing for the municipality. But the question that I have for Ms. Sacre is that I read I'm reading through this financial consideration. You indicated that it's a non-budget is a non-budgeted cost of $19,240. Why don't we try to anticipate some of this so that we can have some of this amount in our budget that way, you know, we're we're good to go. I'm sure you've you've done some of this many times and there must be some anticipation of some money to be spent on something like this instead of not budgeting it. I mean, I'm in support of this, mind you, but it's just that I see non-budgeted cost of $19,240, which is not a lot of money, but nevertheless, shouldn't we be anticipating putting some money aside for something like this in future and then put that money into our budget?
Mr. Shaba, through you to council. Yes, I think you asked that question to me. So I guess the one way we could look at it is we certainly could do some contingency funds where we are putting money aside each year so that when these opportunities arise, we certainly would have a pot of money to to take that from. And again, it's the philosophy of both our, I believe, our Treasury Department as well as council. If they'd like us to budget for the the maybes and the what ifs. So the last few years we've basically been told just to let's budget for what we know is true. And then if something else comes up, then we will determine at that time how it can be funded. So again, it might go back to a philosophical idea. The one idea in speaking with the Treasury Department, there are a few funds that are reserve funds that we can take this money from. So that's kind of the, again, the ideal. So there's there's two that were identified. One is the Organization Restructure and Efficiency Fund. That currently has a balance of just under $250,000. The other is working capital, which is has a balance of just over $2 million. So there are two two reserve funds that we have that we can take these dollars from. So it would not affect the levy and it would not affect any of the the taxes that we've already agreed upon.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree, Ms. Sacre. And I think this council and previous councils have talked about a reserve policy, but haven't really moved forward with it. So it's certainly the the wish, I believe, of fellow counselors to come up with a reserve policy to cover items such as this one would be an example. So that there are not some reserves set aside to to meet that. I could support this as well. Any further comments or questions? None noted? Motion?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that report number 2021 dash CS dash zero one six entitled Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Fund Submission Update be received? And that staff be directed to present an executing bylaw to council to enter into an agreement with Petrowski Consultants Limited as per the attached scope of work to a maximum of $19,240 exclusive of taxes.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 7.5, Ontario Regulation 284 slash 09, Public Sector Accounting Board, PSAB Reconciliation, Peter Georgjock, Deputy Treasurer.
Your Worship, through you to council. I'm here to present this required reconciliation. There's no decisions necessary. It's merely a housekeeping report. And it's presented every year. Ontario Regulation 284 slash 09 requires municipality to prepare a report about excluded expenses and to adopt the report by resolution to council. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? None noted. Do you have a motion to receive the report?
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that report number 2021 dash thin dash zero zero one entitled Ontario Regulation 284 slash zero nine Public Sector Accounting Board, PSAB reconciliation be received?
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Peter. Consideration of notices of motions? None noted? Introduction reading and consideration of bylaws?
Okay, we have a few bylaws this evening. First one, moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second, third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk? And the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero five three being a bylaw to amend the preparation of the town of Kirkland Lake's official plan.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero five four being a bylaw to amend the preparation of the town of Kirkland Lake's zoning bylaw, number 21 dash zero three two.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and
We can hear you.
Yeah, yeah, still here.
My, on my end, it says we're still recording and live streaming, so hopefully that's still all good to go.
Okay.
I believe I got a text message saying it froze while I was reading the site plan. So should I start?
Exactly, that's true. Yeah.
So we'll start there. Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero five five being a bylaw to amend the site plan control agreement with 1969057, Ontario Inc. at 40 to 42 Second Street.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero five six being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of two Premier Avenue East to Jeanne-Günter LeMans.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero five seven being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of property located at 8 and 10 Kelback Avenue to Emily Lepat.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero five eight being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of lands and the township to M.D. de Haller Hossain.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the sorry, be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero five nine being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of parts one and two 54R dash six one nine seven to Robert Portless.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dot zero six zero being a bylaw to repeal bylaws that appoint and delegate authority to a chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Motion carried.
And last one, moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero six one being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Northland Group of Companies for Arena Refrigeration retrofit.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number 10, questions from council to staff? None noted? Notices of motion? Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, okay, I'm not too sure. I I thought this might be a question from council to staff, but thinking about it, I believe that this might really fit into, given a notice for motion. given a notice of motion to come at a next meeting. Um, in my line of work, I've been approached by so many people as to uh, why the town is not uh, looking at having uh, a sub, another subdivision. I know in the past we had one over on uh, Calback and Balsam. And the, I believe the property sold very fast. And then there was the one uh, that K L Go develop, uh, and that one, there was no, no lots there. So the bottom line is that if anybody want to build right now in town, it appears to me that uh, they don't have anywhere to go and, and build. And I know in many municipalities that I work in is always uh, a place to go uh, to build especially residential homes. And I, I know we do have one for uh, commercial, which is down Archard Drive, which is perfect. So I'm thinking that maybe the staff should look into where a next expansion of this, of the town might be in terms of subdivision. Uh, one in mind would be around maybe behind Queen, Queen Street. Uh, uh, between Queen Street and Archard Drive. I'm not too sure how much land is there. So I'm going to be putting a notice of motion, uh, a next meeting to uh, direct the staff to a split, maybe try to identify where the need for a, a, a special or sub, future subdivision might be. Because my understanding right now is that if people really want to build a house, I'm not too sure there are a lot of lots around for, ready for people to build. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, Counselor reports? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I just want to say that um, thanks to Megan, I uh, I'm sitting in the boardroom tonight and it's uh, almost hits the feel of a real meeting. Um, this is the first time I've seen Mayor Kylie face-to-face for a long time. And I'm really looking forward to when we can meet in the council chambers again. I'm optimistic and hopeful that come September, we will be back in the council chamber and hopefully open so the public can attend the meetings as well. It's certainly something I'm looking forward to and I'm, I'm sure there are members of the public um, that are looking forward to it as well. But at the same time, I've got to thank the provincial government for allowing us to meet this way. Prior to the pandemic, this would not have been allowed. And, and it has worked well for us. Um, so hopefully in September, we'll be able to meet face-to-face again. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Owen. Uh, Counselor Shaba.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much, your worship. On uh, I believe it's June twenty-first. Uh, I attended a ceremony at the Beaver House on Station Road. Uh, that happens to be the National Indigenous uh, Day. Uh, it was a, a very good ceremony. I'd like to uh, thank uh, Chief Wabi and uh, all the staff at the Beaver House um, uh, for the invitation. Um, I'm really hoping that down the road that, that the corporation will at least uh, try to uh, work with, um, I'm sure that uh, we're working with them anyways. Work with some of our indigenous organizations in town and in the area uh, to see what common goals that we have in providing uh, services or development to the town. So I, I know that they have a, a, a lot of projects on the go and, and we should be really be working with them and maybe have articulation agreements on, on many things that they wanted to do. So bringing them closer to the corporation so that we can help uh, them and they can help us. So uh, it is a very good ceremony and I'm also indicating that we should really be reaching out to see how much we can uh, collaborate on common interest projects going forward. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Counselor Shaba. I did have some discussion with uh, one of the leaders and uh, it was a discussion about a national day of mourning for the indigenous uh, children who have disappeared. And we're very uh, blunt to detail, but uh, there is some discussion going on uh, as we speak and hopefully uh, we'll be able to elaborate and participate in that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number thirteen point one, Ombudsman's Report.
Uh, so we received uh, an Ombudsman's Report, uh, that is attached to the agenda for yourselves and the public to see. Uh, there are some recommendations in there that they request uh, council makes a motion about if, if desired. So currently I just have a proposed motion to receive the report, but if there's anything further that you wish to put forward for action steps based off of their recommendations, we can certainly do that.
If I may comment, uh, one of the uh, recommendations was to uh, record the closed meetings. I know I brought it up in the previous council and it was turned down. Uh, it, it's not a bad idea. More council uh, municipalities are, are uh, going, going that route. There's some advantages to it, it's certainly uh, there's no dispute with, with what comes out of it. So it's up to consider. Uh, I think overall the report uh, was fair. Uh, I, I didn't think it was an attempt to uh, breach the uh, code of conduct or, or closed meeting uh, aspect of it. Unfortunately, the title of the, on the agenda was very uh, not very direct. And uh, we, we did discuss that with the, the Ombudsman's Office. And uh, I don't think there's anybody that disagrees. Uh, it could have been a lot clearer and would have saved a lot of aggravation, I think, or concerns. I, I don't think at this time, Rick, okay, uh, sorry. So anyway, uh, the, the report is, is fairly straightforward. Uh, any further comments or uh, concerns from uh, other council members? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I just want to say that uh, um, it was pretty amazing how bad my memory was when I got the call to be interviewed about that particular meeting. Um, it's not like I figured I remembered everything word for word. And when I was working as a reporter, um, I had developed a very good memory system because you can't always get the notes or you can't always get the recording like you want. Um, I think it's certainly uh, we should look into uh, recording the in-camera session. Um, I think it could make investigations a lot easier, a lot shorter, a lot less expensive for the Ombudsman. Uh, and I think there can be no disputing the, well, I mean, you can always dispute the conclusion, but the Ombudsman will have actual eyes on exactly what happened and will be able to make a decision based on that. So I think when we have a, a full council, perhaps in September, uh, we should revisit this and uh, discuss it and see if that's the route we want to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Shaba.
Uh, yes, I'm also in favor of recording the in-camera session. Uh, uh, it, it is for the public good. Uh, we have nothing to hide. And again, it will really facilitate uh, very quickly, uh, or get into the outcome of any investigation because the evidence will be non-dis, non-disputable. It will be there, what people say. Uh, so I'm, I'm in favor of that. And then of course, it is for the record too, um, for people to, to see uh, down the road. Uh, I, I might understand it right now is that um, even uh, if, if you don't record it, uh, people can find a way to get information uh, through Freedom of Information Act. But then either that, I'm not too sure if that information will be accurate or not because there are no recording, there's nothing about it. So, so I'm in favor of recording uh, uh, the in-camera session uh, for the public good. Thank you.
Yeah, if I may note, uh, add uh, that came out of that. And also I spoke with municipal affairs. Uh, the minutes of the closed in-camera sessions are, are strictly those that are recorded through the clerk. Uh, I, I noted during that particular meeting that was of concern that uh, council member taking notes and, and later sharing them with the Ombudsman's Office. There's not, nothing. They, they should not, that should not occur because those not, those notes could come out into the public, especially under the uh, they didn't have to go to the Ombudsman's Office. It's up to them to investigate that, that uh, we don't know what were in the notes. I'm, I'm sure there was nothing, uh, nobody was up to anything, uh, trying to sway things one way or another. But if, if notes are taken by a council member, all council members must agree with those notes. So we never saw those notes, so they're meaningless. They don't, they shouldn't exist. So it's uh, something we should uh, be aware of in the future.
Yeah, I, I agree. Those notes should not really be accepted as any evidence at all of anything because they're, they're, they, they could be very subjective. In many cases, they are very, very subjective. So I agree with you, uh, your worship, all the more reason why we should have a, a, official recording through the clerk. That way, um, it will not, it will be official and it will not be, it will be indisputable.
Any other comments on the Ombudsman's Report? I think basically we should accept the report and, and maybe review it uh, uh, with the full council members as far as any changes that, that they recommended.
Sure, um, through your worship as well. So logistically, the, the one biggest thing that um, was recommended in there is to update the procedural bylaw so that the clause is consistent with the municipal act. So I think if we add that to the motion at least, then we know that, and I'm already working on the procedural bylaw, but then we know that it's been directed, that I bring it back. And then even at that time, that's when we can include about the recording of closed session because that could be a clause that's put in the procedural bylaw. So I think if we just pass that tonight, then that sets us up nicely for later of, uh, addressing these other issues.
Perfect.
So we'll do, moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the Ombudsman's Report be received and that staff be directed to make the appropriate updates to the procedural bylaw to be compliant with the municipal act updates.
All in favor? Motion carried. We have item four came, a motion to move into a closed in-camera session.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine-two to discuss four proposed land disposition matters and one labor relation matter involving identifiable individuals.
All in favor? Motion carried.